The hour is 7:00 PM. Having arrived, I'll call to order this regular meeting of the Keene City Council. This meeting is televised live on Channel 1302. The video is also streamed on the city's website and is posted to the website by the end of the next business day, barring any technical difficulties. If you'd like to receive an electronic copy of the city council packet to reference while viewing future broadcasts, please subscribe to the city's email list. The agenda is also accessible from any mobile device. The city has adopted a mandatory indoor face covering ordinance to combat the pandemic, which we are in the process of educating businesses and the public about. We request that anyone present in the room comply with the ordinance and wear an appropriate face covering. Thank you all for your cooperation. I would ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Brian J. Lake.
Here.
Michael J. Remy. Gladys Johnson.
Here.
Michael Giacomo. Randy L. Filio.
Here.
Robert C. Williams.
Here.
Philip M. Jones.
Here.
Andrew M. Madison.
Here.
Chrissy Roberts.
Here.
Raleigh C. Omerod.
Here.
Bettina A. Chadbourne.
Here.
Catherine I. Workman. Mitchell H. Greenwald. Kate M. Bosley.
Here.
Thomas F. Powers.
Here.
Thank you very much. Counselor Greenwald, will you please lead us in the pledge? All right. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Counselor Greenwald.
Thank you.
Just one announcement, I believe. Staff will be making their traditional presentations for the Keene City Council on the CIP. They'll also be making a presentation to the planning board for this CIP, which spans the years 2023 to 2029. These presentations will be in the Michael E. J. Blastos Community Room on Saturday, January 22nd, so this Saturday. There will be coffee and danishes available from 8:00 AM, and the presentations will start at 8:30. This event should conclude by 11:30 AM. You'll find the CIP document on your desk as you enter the room tonight. And I'm referring the CIP to the planning board and FOP. FOP meetings for January 27th and February 10th, if necessary, February 24th as well, will start at 5:30 PM, and we will be serving a light meal in advance of those meetings. Public hearing will be scheduled for March 3rd, 2022 at 7:00 PM, and once again, FOP will be starting their meetings at 5:30, so keep note of that. One more announcement. The legislative delegation meeting will be hosted this Monday over at the County Delegation Hall. It'll be at 6:00 PM. Councilors can either park at the county parking lot on Winter Street or Center Streets, and they can enter through the doors on either side of the old courthouse building. Refreshments will be served at 5:15, and delegation hall is on the second floor. I encourage everybody to attend. With that, I'm looking for a motion on the minutes from Counselor Powers. The second by Counselor Bosley, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before that is done, I'll take prerogative for another council announcement. It seems that somebody has a birthday next week. Thirty-sixth birthday.
Yesterday.
Okay. I'm sure you guys argue out who's the youngest, but happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
And I would move to accept the minutes from the January 6th, 2022 regular meeting as printed.
And I second that.
And we have a motion from Counselor Powers, seconded by Counselor Bosley. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, are you ready for a vote? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Next, we have a presentation from the Greater Keene and Peterborough Chamber of Commerce. I'd invite Luca Paris and Julie Chauvel to the podium up here.
Hello? Is that good?
Yes.
Thank you for having us. I am Julie Chauvel. I am the project manager of the Promoting the Region campaign, and with me is Luca Paris, the CEO and president of the Greater Keene and Peterborough Chamber. So we are going to present on our Regional Branding and Marketing Initiative. So first, I'm going to talk to you about what regional branding and marketing is and why it's important. Regional branding is the process of defining a region's distinct and authentic qualities and capturing them with a simple and compelling ownable story. A region's brand or reputation is the first step to consideration for a visit, move, job, or investment. And then regional marketing is the act of sharing that story to attract our desired audiences through communications and tactical efforts that serve the region's objectives. This is not about logos and taglines. It's about a strategic roadmap for competing as a region. So this is, you're a great audience because a lot of these issues are going to be very familiar to you. So the sky is not falling, but we need to take action. Our regional population declined by a half percent between 2010 and 2020. Doesn't seem all that earth-shattering, but by 2040, our 65-plus population will have expanded from 15% to 30% of our population. I think we can all agree that that's going to impact the workforce substantially because we won't have as many workers. They'll be retiring. Meanwhile, our K-12 population is shrinking. Fifteen to 25% decline in enrollment regionally since 2007. And enrollment at our local colleges and universities has declined substantially in the last 10 years. So some other key facts. The latest unemployment rate that I was able to find is for November is 2.2% for Cheshire County, which means roughly 900 people are looking for work, which is far from enough to fill the over 4,000 open positions within a 25-mile radius of Keene. In a 2020 UNH poll of regional employees, two-thirds expected retiring workers to have a negative impact on their organization's efficiency in the next five years. Now that was sort of, we thought the pandemic was going to be over probably soon after that. That's only been accelerated because people are retiring much earlier due to the pandemic and the stresses it's causing just for working. But this is also presents a unique opportunity. In another December 2020 Gallup poll, close to half Americans expressed a preference for living in either a town or rural area rather than a city or suburb, which is a distinct increase than just from 2018, when only four in 10 thought that country living was ideal. Torrington, Connecticut, Pittsfield, Mass., and Lebanon, New Hampshire all went from a negative net migration rate in 2019 to a positive net migration rate in 2020. It's the first time that's happened in many, many years. And a lot of that is related to people working in these urban and suburban areas realizing, oh, I can do this somewhere else, and also realizing that there's just more opportunity. So more workers are feeling confident that opportunities can be found outside large urban areas. Now, what's been hard for us is that our region is not widely understood. While we are well-regarded by those who do know us, not enough people know us. Only one in five in New Hampshire are very familiar with the region. Outside of our region across the state, there's low intent to work, live, or go to school here. Only one in 10 in Massachusetts are very familiar with our region, and only one in three in Massachusetts even know where the Menadnock region is. So I'll talk about that a little bit more before I get to this next slide. What's good about that is that we're not having to repair any kind of reputation. We get to start fresh. It's better to be not known than to be known for something that we have to recover from. So, you know, I would rather that situation than anything else. So the project leadership, we've got Luca, and then here's another list of people. You'll certainly recognize several of these names. And our marketing and branding partner is North Star. They are a place branding and marketing firm that we've hired. They're out of Tennessee and Florida. All they do is place branding, and they have two decades of experience over 200 communities. Their process is an immersive and inclusive process, so the first step is stakeholder and community education. They were here back in October for five days, where they toured the region and met with many key stakeholders, some of you here tonight. We toured over 200 miles. We went to Gilson, Winchester, Walthall, Keene, Dublin, Peterborough, Hancock, Bringe. I think that's everything. And...
I got lost in a couple of places.
And then the next phase, which they're in right now, is insight gathering and research. So it's not just in who and what and why and how. It's more than that. They're also looking at how we're known today. So they have something to measure it against once we launch the marketing side of things. We got to start with the base metrics so we know if we're actually, you know, hitting our targets. DNA strategy formation, so that's really crystallizing what we own alone as a region, what's distinct about us. Then they'll do the brand identity and message development, and they'll do that with the committee that we have, and we'll sort of define the brand more. And then we do the action ideas and the rollout, and that's also when we will develop the marketing plan. Now, in addition to this, what's very helpful about this process is it's going to help us identify the target audiences that we need to hit. It's very easy to say, everyone would want to live here. It's wonderful. But we really need to target specific demographics, most importantly, to make sure we have a workforce going forward. You know, whether that's, so we have four key areas that we look at in that goal. We've got just workers in general, college students, young families, and tourists, you know, the people that come here and they have a great experience, and then they're like, well, let me go on Indeed and see what's available to do for work here. So what do we expect to happen? So wider, more frequent consideration from visitors, investors, employers, residents, and workers. And conversions on our key economic metrics are more tourism, more investment, expanding and diversifying our employment base, attracting new residents and workers, and an increase in return migration. So those are people that maybe they graduate from here, they go to college somewhere else, they spend a couple of years in New York, and then they come back. Right here, we have an example of a region that North Star worked with. They used to be called the Roanoke Valley. They had to re-change their name entirely. And you can see, we picked this one because there's some overlap with some of the things I feel like we could be known for. We have great recreational activities and a thriving art scene, which makes for a great quality of life and a great place to raise a family. Let's see. And then here is how you can help, spreading the word, educating and advocating. If you can think of anywhere else that might enjoy this presentation, just let me know. On everyone's desk is a little card, and it says brandingmenadnock.com, and that will take you to a survey that we would love for you to fill out. That is helping North Star identify what makes this area special, what you love here, what you wish was different here, what you're hoping to get from this. And you can also sign up to be a brand ambassador, which is when we're ready to roll out. You'll help us educate, you know, communities and businesses and things like that to ensure we have a cohesive rollout. And now it's time for questions.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Counselor Roberts?
About 20 years ago, you were talking about the point of reverse migration. About 20 years ago, we could count on people going to college, graduating, go make money, come back to Keene, buy a medium-priced house, and raise their kids here. We used to have 1,800 plus at the high school. We're down to 300. Have you reached out and found out why the people in their late 20s and early 30s stopped coming back to Keene?
Well, I, so part of the process of doing this is trying to get as much information as possible from people. So I'm one of those people that came back with a person who left the area. Counselor Greenwald's children did the same thing. They were born here and grew up here, left, came back with someone else in tow. I was one of those people that came back with Lindy, who went to school in Swansea, and we came back to live our life. I don't know what's missing from that. We don't necessarily know all that's missing, but I think what the survey does, what this process is doing, is helping us figure out some of those factors along the way. By everyone answering the survey, and everyone's voice is super important in that. Your voice in that survey helps us figure out what is the Menadnock region. Now, remember, and we've had conversations with some of the councilors about this and the mayor, about how important is each part of the region to this equation of what we're developing. This doesn't answer all the questions. This doesn't take care of the housing problems. This won't take care of a lot of things. But it's a start to get people thinking about this region as a place. So when they are thinking, I'm moving out of New York, or they're thinking, I'm moving out of Boston, I want to find someplace that has a more rural lifestyle, why isn't this on their mind? Because they don't know. And we have a unique ability in our area is that we have a city that for people from the city feels rural, but it's avant-garde, it's art, it's technology, it's innovative, it's exciting. Plus, you go 10 minutes out of the city, and you're living a lifestyle that people could only dream about. So we have everything as a region. What we're trying to formulate is that story so that way kids that live here now want to come back to it, and people that don't know of it find it. So that's what this is doing. I don't know if we'll find all the answers about why they didn't do that from 20 years ago to now, but maybe in the process, we do find some of those answers.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Bosley?
So I was just wondering, when you were looking at some of the statistics that you presented.
Your microphone, Counselor Bosley.
When you were looking at some of the statistics that you printed on the screen for us, it said that one in 10 folks in Massachusetts didn't recognize this area. But when that question was asked, I'm just curious, was the question asked about the region in general? So was the question, do you know where the Menadnock region is? Or is the question ever represented, like, do you know where the city of Keene is? Because I know that we are kind of the heart of the Menadnock region. When I talk to folks about where I'm from, and we are traveling to Massachusetts a lot, they would never know what the Menadnock region is, but they would understand where Keene is on the map. So I'm just curious, if, I understand, your process is identifying and branding the Menadnock region, but how is Keene, you know, associated specifically in that? And is there any collateral that you could use to, you know, help sort of transition what the branding that we already have as a city and as a touristy, you know, place where people come and use our trails and have the access to all the nature here, and then use that pre-existing knowledge, I guess, to help further the Menadnock region?
So in the 20 years that I've lived in this town, in the city of Keene, I'm Keene-centric by and far. Actually, I was central square-centric more than Keene-centric. I lived on Main Street, worked, you know, created a life on Main Street. So I see that. And I did the same thing. When I would travel, I could travel almost anywhere, and I found it very difficult not to go away one time and say I'm from Keene and not have someone know what I was talking about. That's, maybe that was unique to me. Maybe that does happen. But when I took this job and I realized it works on both levels, that Keene is the heart, Keene has the notoriety. Boston is the heart of the Boston area, and it has the notoriety. We're on a smaller scale, but we are. But the region itself, we have to figure out a story that brings the whole region together. Because Keene doesn't live on an island. Without all the towns around them doing well and the whole region doing well, it will affect Keene, right? And we need to keep this going for the whole region, and Keene will be stronger because of it. It still is the place that everything kind of funnels into. Yes, if you go more, is that west? Where's Peterborough? Is that west? I'm really bad at that. East, there we go. Thank you. That way. When you go more that way, there'll be more of a center. But still, Keene is our city for this area. There has to be this balance. That's why the survey and the process, I mean, let's face it. If I told you all that, let's go and brand the region or the city, all of us have a tagline in our head, have a slogan in our head, could probably do it for half the price. You give me 50 bucks, I'll give you a slogan. But the process is important, and following that process and what we're doing here might come up with a story that will benefit both Keene and the region. But Keene is the heart. That's why the voices that we asked for in the survey, that's why we approach people in the Keene area to speak their, you know, to say their say and to talk with North Star, because we want them to hear the stories here and in all the towns around it. So it's not easy. Trust me, when I say that I looked at this and I went, you really think we could pull this off? And North Star came back here? We follow a process. We believe in it. And I'm starting, I'm more than starting to, I started believing in the process. But I think Keene has a big voice in this, and we have to make sure that's heard. And how that story is told, remember, it's, again, branding is not, like Julie said, branding is not a tagline and slogan. It's seeing the DNA of a story and how to tell it. And part of that story, big part of it, the biggest chapters are in Keene, but the rest of the book and the rest of the story has to be the Menadnock region. So my answer is I don't know what we're going to come up with until we go through the process. And that's somewhere around March or April of this year, we'll get a better understanding.
And to answer your question about the survey itself, it was a UNH survey that was conducted, and the term was used as Menadnock region. One thing that's a little interesting with that term is it sort of organically has a life on its own already. Like, a New York Times article came out just in this past fall, front page of the travel section, it was all about the Menadnock region. And it mentioned Keene, and it even mentioned walking down the streets of Keene in the evening. But it did include it in the Menadnock region, and there is this word, Menadnock, you know, looking at the chamber. The most used word consistently in the businesses is Menadnock. And so, you know, it's, it's not out, you know, it doesn't, it's not... I know it's a tricky word, Menadnock, and we are focusing as well on Keene, but it's also something that's taken on outside of this process already. Like, we didn't, you know, whether other publications are talking about this area, they're calling it the Menadnock region as well.
Okay, Phil?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank you for taking on this project. I'm certainly looking forward to it and I would gladly step up and be an ambassador when you're ready for them. This region has a lot of strengths. And you know what? Some of us being here don't see them. There is a lot going on here that outsiders might, might see that we don't. Same with weaknesses too. We might have some weaknesses that here that, because we're not outside of here, we don't see it. There's, there are some obstacles. I mean, people in Portsmouth and Dover think Keene is in Vermont. You know, those things happen. That's kind of the things we have to address. But you're going in the right direction. So congratulations to you and I look forward to this.
Thank you. We will take you up on your ambassador offer for sure.
Okay, any other questions at this time? All right, thank you very much. I appreciate the information.
Thank you very much for having us.
All right, back to our regular agenda. We have confirmations, number one.
This evening, we are confirming two nominees, both going to the zoning board of adjustment. The first would be Jane Taylor, she's currently a member and her next term will end December 31, 2024. Anna Richard Clough, he will be joining the zoning board of adjustment and that term will expire December 31, 2023.
Thank you. I'm looking at Council Powers for a motion. Council Bosley for a second, please.
A move to confirm the nomination?
And I second that.
We have a motion from Council Powers, seconded by Council Bosley. Any discussion? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council Lake?
Yes.
Council Johnson?
Yes.
And Council Filio?
Yes.
Council Williams?
Yes.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Council Madison?
Yes.
Council Roberts?
Yes.
Council Ormerod?
Yes.
Council Chadbourne?
Yes.
Council Greenwald?
Yes.
Council Bosley?
Yes.
Council Powers?
Yes.
It's unanimous, number two.
The mayor is nominating Council Jacomo to return to the Partner City Committee. He was formerly a member. That term will expire December 31, 2023, and the mayor is nominating Heidi Schwieger or Schwieger as an alternate to human rights. And that term will expire December 31, 2024.
And we will table the nominations to the next regular meeting, which brings us to communications, number one.
At the Finance Committee last week, two councillors recused themselves due to conflicts of interest and they are Council Remy and Council Madison. And that was due to their affiliation with the Keene Young Professionals Network in their request to use city surplus community event funding. So the first is from Council Remy and looking for a motion to grant his conflict.
Okay, I'd be looking at Council Powers for a motion, please. Council Bosley for a second.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. I move to accept the conflict of interest of Council Remy.
I second that.
We have a motion from Council Powers, seconded by Council Bosley. Any, any comments or questions? Council Remy's not here to speak to it, but that's okay. Seeing none, are you ready for a vote? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous, which brings us to number two.
And this was from Council Madison and essentially the same situation.
And again, I'm looking at Council Powers for a motion. Council Bosley for a second, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to accept the conflict of interest of Council Madison.
Can I second that?
We have a motion from Council Powers, seconded by Council Bosley. Any discussion on this one? Seeing none, are you ready for a vote? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Which brings us to committee reports, number one.
Finance Organization and Personnel Committee report relative to a request to use excess New Hampshire Road toll credits as the city's match for the Lower Winchester Street project. On a vote of five to zero, the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee recommends the mayor's and city manager submit a letter to the state on behalf of the city in support of the opportunity for the city to obtain surplus motor vehicle highway toll credits to fund the 20% local city match required to obtain federal transportation grant funds and to take any appropriate action to accomplish this purpose.
Council Powers for a motion. Council Chadbourne for a second, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Move to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Second.
We have a motion from Council Powers, seconded by Council Chadbourne. Council Powers.
Thank you, Your Honor. Council Filio had written a letter to the city council concerning the excess funds in the New Hampshire Road toll credits program. And in fact, I think he, he met with several of us prior to the Finance Committee meeting to discuss it. At our meeting, we were joined with, excuse me, Chuck Redfern, a former city councillor who's had a lot of experience in the state of Vermont's revenue area. So he was well-prepared to discuss this program for us and had done some communications with the city manager. And as a result of the discussion and the work they did, the manager was able to get us a motion that you heard tonight, that really recommends that we move forward. You know, there's always that possibility, we could wait and meet with the county, we can meet with the delegation, we could talk about it. And the council are up in Concord, they'd be meeting all along. But this really pushes it forward. So essentially, what we're, we're looking for is for the city council to authorize the manager to be able to send a letter in support of the opportunity for us to, to go after these fundings. And if it is approved, then we will be back together, trying to put the program together and maybe trying to share it with our friends in Swansea. But this step first is very important. And we hope that everybody in the council will recommend that this be authorized. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Council Filio?
Thank you. Yeah, I, this was brought to my attention a couple of months ago and then as I was looking at it and I spoke to the city manager and former councillor Redfern, you know, gave me a call and, and brought it to my attention that he's done some extensive work looking into this. I do applaud the city manager. And the New Hampshire Municipal Association is looking at this also. This is another situation where, you know, finances aren't rolling downhill from Concord as they should be, what's new. But this is another example that if we can stay on board of this with the city manager and the New Hampshire Municipal Association going forward with this, trying to bring the monies to us, you know, we could hopefully save a million bucks or so on the Winchester Street project. So I hope you all vote in favor of this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for a vote? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous, number two.
Finance Organization and Personnel Committee report relative to 79E Community Revitalization Tax Relief Application for 112 Washington Street. On a vote of five to zero, the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee recommends granting a period of five years for this application. Further, on a vote of five to zero, the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee recommends that the city council determine that the structure proposed for redevelopment located at 112 Washington Street is a qualifying and historic structure as defined by RSA 79E, that the structure is not within the tax increment financing district, but the structure is not a residential property subject to an election towards tax assessment relief under the low-income housing tax credit program of RSA 751A, that the proposed rehabilitation cost estimate exceeds the threshold amount of $75,000 and constitutes substantial rehabilitation, that is at least $5,000 of the total rehab costs and is devoted to energy efficiency in accordance with the U.S. Secretary of the Interior's standards for rehabilitation, that the proposed rehabilitation is consistent with the city's master plan and that the proposed rehabilitation provides the public, the following public benefits as required by Resolution R. 201833. One, it enhances the economic vitality of downtown areas. Two, it enhances and improves the structure that is culturally or historically important on a local, regional, state or national level, either independently or within the context of a historic district, town center or village center in which the building is located. Three, it promotes the preservation and reuse of existing building stock throughout a municipality by the rehabilitation of historic structures, thereby conserving the embodied energy in accordance with energy efficiency guidelines established by the U.S. Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. Four, it promotes efficient design, safety and a greater sense of community in a manner consistent with the Keene Comprehensive Master Plan. Five, it results in an increase in energy sustainability and conformance with the city's adopted greenhouse gas emissions as determined by home energy score of at least six and demonstrated carbon emission reduction of at least 10. Therefore, the committee recommends that the application for real property tax relief on any assessed tax increment resulting from the substantial rehabilitation of the qualifying structure be granted for a period of five years, beginning with the substantial rehabilitation as determined by the city's Community Development Department and conditioned upon the property owner granting to the city at a time of substantial completion, a covenant ensuring the structure shall be maintained and used in a manner that furthers the public benefits for the period of the tax relief to be recorded at the Cheshire County Registry of Deeds at the expense of the property owner.
Thank you very much. I'll have a motion from Council Powers, seconded by Council Chadbourne, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Move for the carryout the intent of the committee report.
Second.
We have a motion from Council Powers, seconded by Council Chadbourne. Council Powers.
Thank you, Your Honor. Other councillors, I just wanted to let everybody know that there's a, a relationship between Mr. Gorman and myself. He's my cousin, second cousin. I disclosed this several times, that things that come before the, the committee and the council, and nobody has seemed to find any, any issue there or conflict. So I'll continue to present this program. But what I will say is, we had a little presentation about the work they're going to do and go out and talk with people, and they said there was only one person in Worcester Mass that knew where Keene, New Hampshire is. There's two of us, Josh Gorman and myself. It's working, it's working, things are going good. The Community Revitalization Program is a real important program that the, the city council approved back several years ago. And we've got two or other, two or three other projects that are already existing and this one is an additional one here on Washington Street, put together by Josh and his wife. This would be the, the carriage house in the back of the building that's already been improved. They're doing work to improve it and bring it up to speed and make it very attractive for other projects. There's a whole process that one must go through to ensure that it meets all the criteria before the city council would approve of it. It has been done. It's been reviewed by city staff, worked with, with Josh and they meet all of the, all of the requirements. And we talked about it at FOP last week. And the first step we took is to recommend that it be a five-year period for this vote, vote for a five-year period to make it consistent with the other ones and give him an opportunity to reinvest the funds that he's worked into this program during that period of time. And after that, after the five-year, then the total amount will be on the tax roll. Everything has been reviewed by the city staff as indicated. They showed that that meets the criteria the other night when they were here. And we recommend the city, the, it was, the whole group recommended that the council authorize this and vote yes. We hope you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, are you ready for a vote? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. And I would just comment, you know, I'm really glad to see this 79E starting to get really utilized. And one thing that the city of Keene can be proud of is, I think we are using it for a lot smaller projects than some other places in the state. And so we're making this program that's enabled by the state legislation, but we're making it accessible to a lot of different people, not just big developers. So we should be really proud of that. Number three.
Finance Organization and Personnel Committee report relative to 79E Community Revitalization Tax Relief Application, this one for property located at 310 Marlboro Street. On a vote of five to zero, the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee recommends granting a period of five years for this application. Further, the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee recommends the city council determine that structure, that the structure proposed for redevelopment located at 310 Marlboro Street is a qualifying structure as defined by RSA 79E, that the structure is not within a currently defined tax increment financing district, that the structure is not a residential project subject to an election for tax assessment relief under the low-income housing tax credit program of 751A, that the proposed rehabilitation cost exceeds, estimate exceeds the amount, the threshold amount of $75,000, constitutes substantial rehabilitation, that at least $5,000 of the total rehab cost is devoted to energy efficiency and according to the U.S. Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehab, that the proposed rehabilitation is consistent with the city's master plan, that the proposed, that the rehabilitation provides the following public benefits as required by Resolution R. 201833. One, it enhances the economic vitality of downtown areas. It promotes the efficient design, safety and a greater sense of community in a manner consistent with the Keene Comprehensive Master Plan. It adds to the city's employment base by creating at least one new full-time job and keeps downtown area. Directly supports the integration of public art in the downtown. Promotes development of a sustainable building stock in the downtown that achieves a nationally or internationally recognized green building standard. Therefore, the committee recognizes, recognizes the ability for real property tax relief on any assessed tax increment resulting from the substantial rehabilitation of the qualifying structure be granted for a period of five years, beginning with a substantial rehabilitation as determined by the city's Community Development Department and conditioned upon the property owner granting to the city at a time of substantial completion, a covenant ensuring that the structure shall be maintained and used in a manner that furthers the public benefits for the period of the tax relief to be recorded at the Cheshire County Registry of Deeds at the expense of the property owner.
Thank you. Looking to Council Powers for a motion. Council Chadbourne for a second, please.
I take, Your Honor. Move to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Second.
We have a motion from Council Powers, seconded by Council Chadbourne. Council Powers.
Thank you, Your Honor. This, once again, is a fantastic project. It's a larger project than the first couple that we've seen. And it's really at a, at a point in our city that it's kind of going to anchor some more growth. Very, very nice opportunity. Randall Walter, the principal in this project, has presented all, all of the requirements for the 79E. Once again, it's been reviewed by city staff. They've met all the criteria. And the first thing that the FOP did was to vote to approve a five-year, five-year period for the approval of this. And they have found, based upon what the information provided by the city, by the staff to the city, that they meet all the criterias that the city clerk got to read. And really go beyond that, because they met all these requirements, but the things that are going to go on down there are massive in terms of the ability to make it a much more attractive piece of property. And there's a bunch of history to that piece of property and I'm sure someday he's going to have a easel there that's going to show, you know, what used to be and what it is now. At one point, it was Pittsburgh Plate Glass Production Plant. You know, over time, it went out of business like so many others, but the building stayed and it never went into a condition that wasn't possible for growth. And he now is going to, to grow this. He's going to bring in some pellet fuel and some solar fuel. So there's many, many things that have become possible because the 79E has given him an opportunity to be able to invest money in this property to grow. And over this five-year period, he'll meet those requirements and then it will go on the tax roll completely to cover all the various programs that are already signed up for the program as he's beginning to build it. So recommended that, by the FOP, that this be granted and we ask the city council to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Council Chadbourne.
I just want to say that I'm really excited about this project and I actually received a few phone calls from people who are also equally excited and not just from that ward or that area. There's been lots of discussion over the years and the city has looked at wanting to enhance that area and the, not just the residents who live in that area, but also other citizens have wanted to see an improvement. It is one of the gateways to our city. And it's exciting because it's not only taking a building and enhancing the building and enhancing the neighborhood, but it's bringing in all of those things that we've been discussing. in all of those things that we've been discussing at large as far as like wanting more art, wanting more reusable energy. I mean, it just hits all those priorities that have been important to the people that live here, so I'm excited.
Great, thank you. Council Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am excited. I certainly look forward to this project, and will be voting for this, but I just want to ask staff, and I don't need an answer now, but I think we should take a look at Resolution R. 201833. I think since we adopted that, there's been changes in the state. I remember Med telling us, especially the downtown area part, that's why we were able to extend further west downtown, because there were changes in the state, and I think we should take a look at our resolution to conform with the state law, if there was a change. I think I remember Med telling us that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for a vote? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Number four.
Finance Organization and Personnel Committee report relative to use of surplus community event funding for the Taste of Keene event. On a vote of three to zero, the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee recommends that unspent funds from the city's FY22 community event budget be used to help offset the costs of city services for the Keene Young Professionals Network Downtown Summer Food Festival, tentatively scheduled for either June 4th or June 5th. Costs over the above available funds will be the responsibility of the Keene Young Professionals Network.
Thank you. I'm looking to Council Powers for a motion, Council Chadbourne, for a second, please.
I take your honor, move to carry out the intent of the committee report?
Second.
We have a motion from Council Powers, second by Council Chadbourne, Council Powers.
Thank you, Your Honor. So we were, once again, we brought up to speed on the potential, and hopefully the weather will work with them, for another Taste of Keene events right here in downtown. I'm sure everybody got to go there for a little bit on the last one, and it was just, you know, it was a fabulous event, it was sort of a coming out of COVID and trying to stay out of COVID, and we're going to stay out of COVID this June, and the only thing that might change it is we get some bad weather, but I bet we could do something about the weather. So they're going, I think they're going to one of the other committees to get permission for that, but what they came to finance for was to talk about the funding for this project, and they were looking additionally for some additional funds that were available, and again, through some work of the finance department and the city manager, they came up with a solution, and that's the motion you have in front of you, that these would be paid for through the funds that are available at the community events programs coming up here, because we're almost at the end of a fiscal year, and it will cover the amount that's available, and if there's any more cost to them, they'll have to cover that through the event, however they raise the money, or maybe they'll have some donations. After this year would mean that they could apply for an outside event funding in the future, or they may have a different project, but at any rate, it gives them a two-year track as our policy asks that they do that. So the Finance Committee, the three of us, recommended that this be approved, and we'd ask the council to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for Council Bozley?
Should Council Madison be refused?
He has been refused.
Does he have to, he doesn't have to?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for a vote? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Number, let's see, five.
Finance Organization and Personnel Committee report relative to a radio reprogramming grant reimbursement from the fire department. On a vote of five to zero, the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee recommends the city manager be authorized to do all things necessary to accept and spend $1,400 awarded from the Department of Safety under the 2019 Homeland Security Grant for the Radio Reprogramming Grant Reimbursement Initiative.
Council Powers for a motion, Council Chadbourne, for a second, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Move to carry out the intent of the committee report?
Second.
We have a motion from Council Powers, second by Council Chadbourne, Council Powers.
Thank you. Deputy Fire Chief Jeff Chickering joined us to explain this particular program. It's an event that every community in the state, when fire and police departments and their radio communications is involved over a period of time, it needs to be updated, and the Department of Safety has gathered the money through federal programming to make it available to each community. So most communities applied for this back in 2018, 2019, to work on the program and get the distribution of money and the work done to all the communities, but COVID just sent that task off the rails, but it's still in progress, and everybody, the events, the money for the events will be honored, they just got to get it done. City of Keene has finished the project, applied for the rest of the task, and they need the authorization for the city manager to be able to accept money to expend for this program, and we'd like the city council to authorize this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for a vote? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Number six.
Finance Organization and Personnel Committee report relative to an agreement for leased parking at the library. On a vote of five to zero, the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee recommends the city manager be authorized to do all things necessary to negotiate and execute an agreement with Mylar Realty LLC for the lease of four parking spaces at 67 Winchester Street.
I'm looking to Council Powers for a motion, Council Chadbourne, for a second, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Move to carry out the intent of the committee report?
Second.
We have a motion from Council Powers, second by Council Chadbourne, Council Powers.
We were joined last week by the manager of the library to bring forward this information, and really, this is necessitated because the property, which is really right across the street from the library, has changed ownership. Long-term owner had been there for quite some time, and I think there was a time when we were able to use parking, and we didn't need that paperwork, so there has been an agreement in the past for the parking there. Staff did a review over there, so what they need for parking, do they really need it because now that the construction is done, but really after a review of what they do, what the traffic of employees, and what they do interior, exterior, they feel it's necessary to continue to have the available property. So 67 Winchester Street is the property number. Parking is behind the building, and we're looking to continue to park, to have four parking spaces in this lease. The FOP voted unanimously, and we'd ask the council to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for a vote? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Number seven.
Finance Organization and Personnel Committee report relative to the Winchester Street Reconstruction Project. This is a contract change order. On a vote of five to zero, the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee recommends the manager be authorized to do all things necessary to negotiate and execute a change order with McFarland Johnson for professional services associated with the Winchester Street Reconstruction Project for an amount not to exceed $12,000.
Thank you. Council Powers for a motion, Council Chadbourne, for a second, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Move to carry out the intent of the committee report?
Second.
We have a motion from Council Powers, second by Council Chadbourne, Council Powers.
Thank you, Your Honor. This has to do with our major project in the Winchester Street corridor, and as you know, because they've been back several times to discuss this with us, the project is moving along, and our attempt to get the pieces, small pieces of property through eminent domain has continued, and one portion of it has wound up in the court process, and because of that, it's required more time by the engineering firm and the folks that are making the evaluations of those properties that we're trying to get and back in court. So our contract is, that we've had with McFarland, has exceeded the amount of money available. So this is a change order for $12,000 to bring it back into speed to cover the cost, and some of that money, $12,000 is the amount we need to authorize for them, it's not to exceed that, but when it all sugars out with the state program, it won't be that amount of money. The state will pay for some portion, the fed will pay for portions thereof, but this is the way, as you know, we have to do this. So this project is continuing, and hopefully the court will be resolved here in the very near future, because quite frankly, the construction period can start fairly soon, and you want to have all these other parts taken care of. So it was voted unanimously by the FOP to approve. We asked the city council to authorize the manager to sign this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for a vote? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Number eight.
Finance Organization and Personnel Committee report relative to Colony Court Sewer Replacement Project. This is a engineering change order. On a vote of five to zero, the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee recommends the manager be authorized to do all things necessary to negotiate and execute a contract change order with DuBois and Keane for engineering and technical services on the Colony Court Sewer Replacement Project for an amount not to exceed $72,000.
Thank you. Once again, I'm looking to Council Powers for a motion, Council Chadbourne, for a second, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to carry out the intent of the committee report?
Second.
We have a motion from Council Powers, second by Council Chadbourne, Council Powers.
Thank you, Your Honor. Our engineer was back to see us again with another project, and this is a project that was begun last year, maybe even the year before, but major portion of the work was done last year, and that part of the reconstruction of the sewer line is on Colony Court, and off the road right away into the property has presented a real challenge to the process. Essentially, at any point in time, the tobacco probably could have sunk a little bit because of the complexion of the land and the soil there. So they stopped doing that work in the fall here, and are trying to put together a program. They know they have to come up with a potential, and the best potential is to try to continue through that property with a different alternative, because if they were to do anything else, it'd be a lot more piping, it'd be pumping up, things of that nature. So they're working with the engineering firm, DuBois and Keane, who's done a lot of work for us, and they're pretty talented at doing this stuff, to come up with a program and process so that they can get back to work as the season starts this year. So the authorization here is for $72,000. The amount of money is in the current project, so they're in good shape for now, and hopefully they're able to come up with something and be able to get the construction season going with a solution and some building done. Unanimously voted by the Finance Organization Personnel Committee, and like the council to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for a vote? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Number nine.
Finance Organization and Personnel Committee report relative to Lower Winchester Street. This is a reconstruction project, and these are project agreements, but two motions. On a vote of five to zero, the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee recommends the city manager be authorized to do all things necessary to negotiate and execute an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Swansea relative to the Lower Winchester Street Reconstruction Project, which is NHDOT project number 40666. Further, on a vote of five to zero, the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee recommends the manager be authorized to do all things necessary to negotiate and execute a three-party project agreement with the NHDOT and the town of Swansea for the Lower Winchester Street Reconstruction Project, again with the NHDOT project number of 40666.
Thank you very much. Council Powers for a motion, Council Chadbourne, for a second, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Move to carry out the intent of the committee report?
Second.
We have a motion from Council Powers, second by Council Chadbourne, Council Powers.
Thank you, Your Honor. Once again, a construction project that involves a road, major thoroughfare, but it's in a long-term schedule of perhaps around FY25 or '26, but of course, there's a number of steps that have to be taken prior to that, and it's the last piece of property that the city of Keene is going to work with on the, basically, a state highway, and it abuts the city of, or the town of Swansea. So it becomes very apparent that it would be the wise thing for us to work a little bit with Swansea and that little piece of no man's land that's not being constructed while we're working there. So the first step is, we have to have an intermunicipal agreement with Swansea. Discussion is directed that that's going to happen, to have that kind of an agreement, but you have to have a legal term, so that one of the steps of this vote is to authorize the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Swansea. And then the second part is to have a three-party project agreement with the Department of New Hampshire Transportation and the town of Swansea for that Lower Winchester Street Reconstruction Period. So that's the, from the roundabout at 101 all the way into Swansea, which is just about where Market Basket is. There's been improvements to that portion of it, but it would make sense to make some other changes, particularly sidewalks and trail areas, things that would make it much more safe, work together with us as to do it. So we're looking for the authorization by the city council, that the manager be able to sign these agreements, for both agreements. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for a vote? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Number 10.
Finance Organization and Personnel Committee report relative to the Well Street Parking Facility. This is for design and technical services for repairs. On a vote of five to zero, the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee recommends that funds appropriated in FY22 for miscellaneous minor repairs to the Well Street Parking Structure be designated for design and technical services for a large scope of repair work.
Thank you. Council Powers for a motion, Council Chadbourne, for a second, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Move to carry out the intent of the committee report?
Second.
We have a motion from Council Powers, second by Council Chadbourne, Council Powers.
So Well Street Parking Facility, once again, has presented a challenge to the city to be able to maintain it. Weather, just so happens that parking facilities in New England are an issue, and we need to address it, and for the most part, we've stayed up to speed and trying to stay ahead of it, but we're using concrete, we've got bad weather, and it just presents itself as a problem. This one has reared its head a little earlier, and the staff has really had an idea that there needed to be something done a lot sooner than normal, so they had put some money in the current, it's in the CIP, and it happens to be the current year, in which they were going to do some maintenance work come spring, but after they did a survey and took a look at what's going on, they recommend that they do more than that. So they'd like to reappropriate or just reassign the money that's in this year's CIP money, together with the money that's in the CIP next year, next year being July 1st, not that far away, and be able to do the major work that's necessary to make that safer and much more serviceable. So if this is approved, then they'll get a firm, and they'll work with them to try to get together the best program to address it and do it in this construction season, which would start, you know, late spring, and be able to go into the fall. So unanimously recommended this at the FOP, and we ask the city council to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for a vote? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple of things for you this evening, manager's comments briefly, and then a statement regarding the capital planning process. So I'll start with the manager's comments, and it's related to a fire staffing committee that I have created. COVID has certainly highlighted the need for more support at the fire department, but the need was there long before COVID. As I have articulated to all of you during the council goals workshop, I have established a committee to review staffing needs at the fire department. The fire chief has requested four more firefighters, and as a side note, this is not in response to the recent fire prevention backlog. The only request for staffing related to that last year was a request for additional part-time admin support primarily for scheduling appointments. This is an issue larger than that. The committee that I have established includes council representation. Councilor Powers and Councilor Remi have agreed to participate, along with representation from the fire union and fire leadership, in addition to finance and HR representatives. from the fire union and fire leadership, in addition to finance and HR representatives. We will review all aspects of fire department staffing to come up with recommendations for a future budget. In the interim, the fire chief has made temporary adjustments, such as adding a 10th person to the shift a few weeks ago, and he has tasked fire department leadership team with bringing forward other interim options. These changes obviously impact the bottom line of the fire department budget, and so I may need to come back to you towards the end of the fiscal year to shift funds from other sections of the budget to cover any overages that occur. I will be monitoring this situation and updating you periodically. The staffing committee will review data related to number of calls, call history and trends, how we respond to a call, how many people and what pieces of equipment respond, and why. We will review our current ambulance service agreements with some of our surrounding towns. We will analyze the impact of the change made to a 24-hour shift. Has this change helped us or hurt us? At the time of the change, the union felt strongly it would reduce sick time usage in the department, which obviously impacts overtime costs and demand for firefighters to cover shifts beyond their own. So has this actually happened? I don't know the answer. So we will analyze what's been happening since we made that change. COVID has certainly impacted sick time usage, but we are tracking COVID-related sick usage separately, and so we should be able to evaluate trends. To complicate matters, there's a changing dynamic happening with the ambulance service in our region. You heard a presentation from the county in regards to their proposed purchase of the D'Alusio ambulance service. We rely on D'Alusio currently to back us up, and in turn, we back them up. This changing dynamic will impact us and our region and needs to be part of this overall staffing evaluation. I have also been meeting with fire department shifts the last couple of weeks, and I have a couple more meetings scheduled over the next few weeks. One thing we cannot quantify in dollars and cents is the toll of working 80 hours or more in a week, week after week, the toll it takes on a person and a person's family. This, in my opinion, is the most important driver of this conversation. The health and well-being of our team is my priority. To do their job well and provide the level of service that our community has come to expect, this has to be our focus. I am, however, convinced there is more than one way to accomplish this. I am asking this committee to help me do a thorough analysis over the next several months and to come up with recommendations to help us get where we need to be. So in addition to that, I would be remiss if I didn't comment in regards to the recent fire in downtown. You know, the mayor was talking about being impressed and proud of things in our community. Well, certainly, there's a lot to be proud of there, related to our fire department and our team and their response. So I want to publicly acknowledge the impressive response by our fire department when responding to the cobblestone fire. The heroic save of a resident on the second floor and assistance provided to our firefighter who became disoriented and low on air should make us all very proud that we have such a capable group of people working for us. I also need to acknowledge the support from our police department. I have a photo in my office of our police officers helping to set up hose lines and ladders before mutual aid assistance arrived. It is just not feasible for any community to have enough on-duty fire staff to respond to a fire of this magnitude. We rely on our partners. Our mutual aid help from communities around us is obviously a huge piece of that puzzle. But before they arrive, we rely on our own city team, our police officers, and sometimes our on-call highway crew. It's an all-hands-on-deck situation, and it's impressive to see how our departments come together to support one another. We could not do what we do without this type of support and camaraderie between departments. I don't think we acknowledge that enough. So I want to thank everyone that was involved and showed up that night, regardless of the role they played, because every role was crucial to our success that evening. I know that was heavy, but it was important that I share all of that with you. On a lighter note, we are starting the capital planning process. And so tonight, this evening, begins the process for review of the years 2023 through 2029 and the CIP. And the mayor already mentioned at your table, you each should have a complete proposed CIP document. In front of the document, there's the usual table of contents for easy reference, and also the appendix in the back of the book. The upcoming meeting schedule, which I know we're all interested in, is on the final page of the city manager's message. And we've already heard the first meeting is this Saturday at 380 Marlborough Street in the Blastos Room, starting at 8:00 AM with coffee and conversation before we kick off the presentations at 8:30. This year, instead of giving our usual dynamic and engaging speeches as a way to review each of the department's future projects, we have set up small groups with poster boards, and will ask you to rotate around the room until you've visited each group. There are four groups, and each presentation and discussion will take about 30 minutes. There's obviously a great deal of information to share, and we are planning to wrap up by 11:30. Therefore, we will focus most of our comments on the first two years of the plan with only mention of some of the upcoming projects in later years. So what's new about the CIP document this year? This year, in an attempt to reduce debt and lessen the impact of necessary infrastructure projects, the proposed CIP plan includes three important new elements. Number one, it incorporates the $2.5 million of ARPA Local Fiscal Recovery Grant Funds as debt reduction in the first three years of the plan. $850,000 per year to reduce debt issuance for the roadway preservation and rehabilitation program. We bond our road preservation projects every year to the tune of about $1.3 to $1.4 million. Number two, it deposits surplus funds in the amount of $875,000 per year in a new capital reserve account to fund wholly or in part projects in future years of the CIP. These funds are also used to reduce debt issuance on current revenues for projects. Here's the exciting part. These two things will save the city approximately $1.5 million in interest over the 10-year life of a bond. That's a great amount of savings. The third thing. Lastly, in this plan, we move closer to level funding the use of what we refer to as current revenues and capital reserve appropriations each year of the plan. This is the number that directly impacts the budget each year. It's the net of debt issuance, capital reserves being used, grants, et cetera, to fund a project. It is the net amount required as part of the operating budget each year. And we are moving in a direction to try to stabilize that number. The CIP is a financial plan for the city's largest expenditures, which is reviewed and amended over time. It is a living document. It's constantly changing. The budget that's approved in June or July timeframe is the document that actually allocates the dollars associated with these capital expenditures for that budget year. The closer we get to creating a plan that provides for stable capital investment year after year, the more predictable the impact of our infrastructure investments will be on our budget. The review of new projects requires two things happen. A decision related to the need of the project, and then a decision as to where in the project should be placed or can be placed. Sometimes that means adjusting other projects to accommodate a project that has a bigger priority. The capital projects in the first year of the plan, as adopted by the council, will be included in the operating budget. Next year, because we do the full review every other year, the capital projects included in the second year will be reviewed as part of the operating budget process and adjustments made as necessary at that time. The proposed CIP and operating budget documents are, of course, guided by council fiscal policies, council goals, and city's master plan. The CIP process provides a framework to consider projects over time and the context of the community's vision, values, and goals, along with the impact on property taxes, utility rates, and other rates. So the next step in the process, the Finance Organization and Personnel meetings will provide opportunity for review of all projects in all years of the plan. The first FOP meeting is scheduled for January 27th, and as you heard tonight, the public hearing is scheduled for March 3rd with the vote of the council on March 17th. And then immediately thereafter, we begin the internal review in preparation for the operating budget, which is then submitted to the council on May 1st, and this FOP process starts all over again. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I'm going to recognize you again because we have a, we have some donations that I'm going to have the city manager read through.
So this is the new process for accepting donations, which will require a suspension of the rules, and we just have a couple of reports from donations from both the fire department and the Parks and Rec Department. So from the fire department, we received several donations in the memory of retired call firefighter Charles, or Charlie Harris. A $50 donation from Deborah Mess, a $25 donation from Rebecca Barrett and members of the Bretwood Culp Course Ladies League, and Kenneth and Sandra Johnson also donated $20. Jean and Brian Barden donated $50. Margaret and Louise Roburge $100. And in addition, a donation of $100 was received from Michael Christensen in thanks of all our members' service and professionalism demonstrated recently during an incident. So for the fire department, we have $345 that has been donated to the city. For the King Park and Rec Department, we received a donation of a bench from Faith Sargent in honor of her father, Bruce Filio. That name sounds familiar. Who was an avid horseshoe player at the courts in Wheelock Park. The family purchased a bench to donate to the city through the Adopt a Bench program and asked the bench be located to overlook the courts. The Adopt a Bench program provides the installation of the bench and a plaque, and the total amount of this donation is equal to $1,350. And we thank everyone for their generous donations to the city.
Councilor Filio?
Yep. I had one donation that you just read. My niece, that has purchased a bench on behalf of my brother who passed away a few weeks ago of cancer. There'll be a celebration of life either in April or May out there, and I'll be inviting the full council to come out there to have a couple of burgers, some ice cream, and throw a few horseshoes in his memory.
Very nice.
Very nice. Thank you, counselor. So this will require a suspension of the rules, this new process, so I'm looking to Councilor Powers for a motion, and Counselor Chadbourne, for a second, please.
I move to suspend the rules of order to allow the acceptance of these donations.
Second.
We have a motion from Counselor Powers, seconded by Counselor Chadbourne. Any discussion on the suspension of the rules? And this does require a roll call.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Counselor Robert?
Yes.
Counselor Armerod?
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne?
Yes.
Counselor Greenwall?
Yes.
Counselor Bozley?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
And so the rules are suspended, and I'm looking for another motion from Counselor Powers, seconded by Counselor Chadbourne, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, and move to accept the donations.
Second.
We have a motion from Counselor Powers, seconded by Counselor Chadbourne. Any discussion? Seeing none. Are you ready for a vote? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. And I would just take a moment to recognize and thank all the people who donated on behalf of the city council and the city of King. Thank you very much. It's always appreciated. And it's always nice to see people you know giving to the city for various reasons, I'm sure, but that's nice. Which brings us to number two.
I've introduced a memorandum to the city council, and I'm asking for referral to the Planning Licenses and Development Committee, and it is essentially certain sections out of the rules of order. These are the sections that were originally identified. I think we started this project in 2019. A lot of them were housekeeping, although some of them were fairly substantive, and I'm asking for the referral to PLD to start that discussion. These amendments do not talk about remote access or conflict of interest. I'm asking that that discussion be held separately so that they, that sort of conversation doesn't overshadow these very important amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. And so that will be referred to the Planning Licenses and Development Committee. And that brings us to Board and Commission Reports, number one.
We have a memorandum from Mary Bruner, a planner up in community development. They've had a resignation from Suzanne Butcher. She's been a member of the Energy and Climate Committee and is no longer able to serve.
Thank you. And I'm looking to Counselor Powers for a motion. Counselor Bozley, for a second, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to accept the resignation with regret and appreciation for her service to the community.
And I second that.
We have a motion from Counselor Powers, seconded by Counselor Bozley. Any discussion? Seeing none. Are you ready for a vote? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. And that brings us to, we have one more time report, and more time will be granted, and that brings us to ordinances for a first reading, number one.
This is a petition for a zoning map change submitted by James Fippert on behalf of the Sandra Henry Trust. It is looking for a zone change on a 12.2-acre parcel of land on the west side of Wickham's Mill Road. The zone change would go from rural to low-density one. And with that is ordinance O 2022-02. If I can get to it here. Lot of attachments. Ordinance O 2022-02, an ordinance relating to amending the zoning map to change the zoning designation at 19 Wickham's Mill Road from rural to low-density one.
Okay. Thank you very much. And this will be referred to the Joint Planning Board, Planning Licenses and Development Committee. Ordinances for a second reading, number one.
Finance Organization and Personnel Committee report relative to ordinance O 2022-01, an ordinance related to class allocation and salary schedules. The committee is recommending the adoption of the ordinance. And we have O 2022-01, an ordinance relating to class allocation and salary schedules.
All right. Thank you very much. Counselor Powers for a motion. Counselor Chadbourne, for a second, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to adopt ordinance 2022-01.
Second.
We have a motion from Counselor Powers, seconded by Counselor Chadbourne. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Your Honor. So this is some updates to the class allocation plan. They're for the non-union positions that are in the plan. And ultimately, it doesn't call for additional personnel. It's changing some positions. There is a category added under the fire department, under probationary, that sets a category for paramedics. However, there's nobody for the position right now. It's part of a process that perhaps may be used, may not be used. So that's in there. The addition of a person is in the, for the IT department, is for our very trained and well-talented fellow that's working for us, who's been working for us as a part-timer, as a contract employee. And we have now come together with a program that puts him as an IT employee to work through this program. So that's in the classification now. And then the other classifications are in the IT department and public works. It's reclassifying the job positions, the duties that the individuals have. Doesn't mean we're going to add employees. It just means that the, there's a recognition- Doesn't mean we're going to add employees, it just means that the, it's a recognition of how the job position and their duties has changed over time, so this has been put together in this program, and it's been brought forward at this point in time to get it before the budget process and get it all done so that we have it all pulled together. The Finance Organization Personnel Committee heard from the HR department and from the department heads involved and recommended humanously that this be approved, and we would like the council to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, I'd just remind the council on this, on this one, you need, it needs a two-thirds majority of elected councillors, so we're going to need 10 affirmative votes on this, and we will do it by roll call. So I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counsel Lake?
Yes.
Counsel Johnson?
Yes.
Counsel Philio?
Yes.
Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel Madison?
Yes.
Counsel Roberts?
Yes.
Counsel Armored?
Yes.
Counsel Chadbourne?
Yes.
Counsel Greenwald?
Yes.
Counsel Bozley?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
It's unanimous, and that is adopted. Which brings us to resolutions, number one.
Planning Licenses and Development Committee report relative to Resolution R 2021-46A. On a vote of two to one, the Planning Licenses and Development Committee recommends the adoption of Resolution R 2021-46 as amended, and we have Resolution R 2021-46A, a resolution in support of a Medicare-for-all plan.
I'm looking at Counsel Bozley for a motion. Counsel Armored for a second, please.
I move to adopt Resolution R 2021-46-A.
Second.
And we have a motion from Counsel Bozley, seconded by Counsel Armored. Counsel Bozley?
Thank you, your honor. So this draft came out of a meeting that we held last year, and the council had actually voted to have the staff draft this and bring it back to PLD. It's been quite a few months, so there's, some of you might not recall, but we did discuss this at that time at full council. I realize that this is a national issue and that there's been a lot of talk at our committee and, you know, at our full council meeting about whether or not we should be discussing and weighing in on national issues, but I do believe that we have not done anything to further clarify that, and personally, I support this, you know, for our, for our nation and our community, because I do believe that ultimately, it will benefit the bottom line for our city and the whole community's health in general. So I hope you will take all that into consideration when you vote on this tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Counsel Jones?
Thank your honor. I know where this is going. I'll be voting no, just to say, stay consistent. Not that I'm opposed to the concept, I'm more opposed to the process within the city, and that's all.
Thank you. Counsel Roberts?
Yes, your honor. I'm opposed to this because I think it's one of those feel-good things. Right now, Medicare Part A is going to run out of money in 2026. Right now, Medicare Part B is having revenues a little bit more than $400 billion a year. While they're having expenses of almost a trillion dollars a year, revenue is going down because there's less people working. And going through a number of the plans, the cheapest plan means that it's going to cost about $30 trillion over the next 10 years. That $30 trillion could go up to about $47 to $50 trillion if the people who have their plans are forced off their plans right now, because the American people spend a little bit more than a trillion dollars a year on their plans, and a lot of Americans like the plans they're on. And another thing where a lot of research goes, just because you put everybody on a plan doesn't mean there's access or supplier capacity, and they project, if they put everybody on the plan, there'll be about 50% unmet demand. And so if we can't solve the current problem right now, which we only have about four years, trying to add something nationwide onto a, onto a system that is failing right now, doesn't make any logical sense to me.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? Counsel Madison?
Thank you, your honor. Personally, I support Medicare for All. I think it will help the city's bottom line. I think it will help our population. I myself went five years without health insurance when I was living out West and when I was living in Indiana for grad school. That being said, I find myself growing increasingly concerned that more and more national issues are being brought before the council for our comment. Those same national issues are not being brought to other communities, they're not being brought before the county of Cheshire, they're not being brought to federal representatives. It seems like some groups are bringing them only to the city of Keene, only to the Keene City Council, expecting the city council to take on these issues on their behalf. So I'm just getting a little concerned that we're doing more and more advocacy for the area and for individuals and for groups who are unwilling to bring these issues to their own town councils, to their own select boards, and to the county, and to our federal delegation. So I think maybe it is time we consider developing some guidelines for when we do comment on national issues. All that being said, I am going to vote in favor of this resolution, but I think moving forward, we should start to consider when we do comment on national issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Williams?
Yeah, just want to say one reason why this is important for the city. As we all know, when taxes go up, we hear about it, and frequently, the taxes that go up are not because of our spending, but they're because of the school board. The recent school board budget that came out, you know, raises taxes a bit. The biggest reason for that is the increase in healthcare costs. They had, you know, a few sick people, a few very sick people in the past year, and as a result, the cost for healthcare for the school board has gone up by a million bucks, and we're all going to be paying for that. And even though it's a school board, we're going to hear about it from our constituents. This is an important issue, and I urge everyone to vote yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for a vote? All those in favor? Opposed? Two opposed. The committee report is adopted, and the resolution is voted. So that is the final item on our regular agenda. There is no non-public. I want to thank everybody for your time and attention tonight. We stand adjourned.